Good evening and welcome to our voting session for June 2019 of the Cobb School Board. We have completed our executive session, and now I ask that if you can to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to public comments. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have four speakers this evening. How much time can we allot?
Let's do three minutes apiece.
Very good. Our first speaker is Stephanie Stevens, who will discuss STEMAPalooza, and she'll be followed by Justin Bounds.
Hello, good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Radixteau, it's good to see you all. My name is Stephanie Stevens, and I have the honor of serving as Director of I Teach, which is a professional development consulting and coaching unit inside of the Bagwell College of Education at Kennesaw State University. I'm here tonight simply to express gratitude for our partnership with the STEM Department here in Cobb County Schools. We've been able to support STEMAPalooza as well as the STEM Innovation Academy educators for the last several years. Specifically this year, we were at STEMAPalooza at Kennesaw Mountain High School with our Maker Bus, which is a mobile maker space. Really exciting and was great fun for all, but we required a little bit of extra support this year to make sure that power was running to the vehicle, and so three members of the facilities team, some electricians and others, really stepped up and helped out, so I wanted to just say publicly thank you to them. I also wanted to let you all know that we've got the privilege to partner with Cobb EMC, who has been a grant partner of ours for the last two years. Last year Cobb EMC fully funded visits to Burnie and Brumby Elementary School here in Cobb County, which we're really happy to do, and we just got word that the Cobb Education Foundation, Cobb EMC Education Foundation, has given us some additional funding for next year. So we have got provisionally scheduled for next year Riverside Primary Intermediate as well as Green Acres Elementary School, so I wanted to let you all know about that. And again, just to say thank you for the partnership, to applaud all who are working on the STEM portion of all of the extras that go into Cobb. It's not an afterthought here, it's an integral part of the curricula, and it's duly noted by myself, our college, and my team at I Teach, so thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Justin Bounds, who will discuss potential transfer of IB programs and SPOLOST application to Campbell High School, and he'll be followed by Anna Clay.
Good evening, members of the board. I appreciate your time. My name is Justin Bounds. I am a parent of two kids in the Campbell High School District. My son is at Teasley, my daughter is at Campbell Middle. Just, I've been going to SPOLOST meetings for about eight, nine years now, on a number, I guess that's two or three SPOLOSTs, and I want to express my gratitude for the efforts that the board has undertaken with respect to those SPOLOST plans and offer my continued support and the fact that we're looking forward to benefacting from the SPOLOST plans for Campbell High. My son and daughter have benefited from the Teasley expansion, we thank you for that, for the SPOLOST funds that have gone to Campbell Middle, and again, we're looking forward to continuing that at Campbell High, and looking forward to that also to the possibility of both of our kids going to the IB program if that is a possibility at Campbell. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Anna Clay, who will discuss improvements at Pebblebrook, and she'll be followed by Marie Stockton.
All right, first of all, I want to start off with some thanks. I'm a teacher at Pebblebrook, and it has been great for me to see how much attention and time has been given to Pebblebrook lately. I know several people have visited Pebblebrook's campus. Mr. Scamahorn has been out several times, other members of county leadership, so I just want to extend a thank you. We really appreciate all of your time and attention. There's also been some action that we've asked for and that, you know, our needs have been met a little bit on that, so I just want to thank you for removing the lockers from the main building. It was great to see those leaving yesterday. I understand there's a soil erosion plan that's going to be coming soon, that's going to be great to see, and then my personal favorite big-ticket item is the expansion of the new building, so that the TNI building is going to be gotten rid of, and the new building is going to be even bigger now. I want to thank you very much for that. That will make a huge difference in our campus. There was a question earlier at the afternoon session about trailers and whether they include restroom facilities. As of right now, Pebblebrook's trailers do not include restroom facilities, but I've heard kind of through the grapevine that we will be getting those and we should expect them before the school year starts, so I'll say thank you in advance for that as well. Restrooms are very important for the trailers that are located very far away from the center of campus. Another note that I think Trey Hutchins talked about earlier today, because some of those trailers are going to be so far away from the center of campus, they're going to end up being close to what's known as the cut, which is called that because that's where students cut campus, or they cut class and leave campus. It actually goes into a neighborhood, so when students leave campus through the cut, they're going in between people's houses. There's a fence that has some graffiti on it, there's like a path through somebody's yard. From what I understand, the homeowners there are not too thrilled with that. It hasn't, I guess, come to a head yet because it's kind of off to the edge of campus, but with the trailers being relocated over there, with more foot traffic being over there, I'm concerned that the cut is going to be an even bigger issue, so I believe Trey Hutchins provided a plan for what we want to do to help close that off. I just want to make sure that that is something that is a top priority before the school year starts, so that those homeowners in the area don't have to deal with this being like a regular thoroughfare. We do have some exciting stuff coming on our end. There was a meeting that we had yesterday among teachers, parents, there were some community members there, the performing arts, parents, coaches, athletes.
Thirty seconds.
And we have, thank you, we have a beautification project that we're working on, where we're going to do some painting and landscaping to go along with the erosion plan from the county, so we're getting a lot of community support and parent support from all areas for that, so there's some exciting stuff coming to Pebblebrook. So in summary, I want to thank you for all of your attention so far, thank you for addressing our concerns so far, and I look forward to seeing the resolution of any remaining issues. It's going to be a great year at Pebblebrook, so thank you.
Our final speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Marie Stockton, who will discuss magnet update.
Hello again, I'm Marie Stockton, and I will thank you in advance for tolerating me a second time today. Our Campbell team has been busy keeping the focus on their plans for our bigger boat, as I referenced earlier today, parking and cafeteria and facade and all of the things that are using creative solutions and benchmarking to come up with resolution, while we're celebrating the phenomenal job that the entire team at Campbell is doing under Dr. Walker's leadership. As a parent of students at Campbell, I could not be more proud of the education that my children have received inside that building regardless of what the bathroom looks like or what the parking situation looks like, so I'm so grateful to have your leadership for a group of leaders that is truly impacting the future of my children, so I'm so grateful that that's happening. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that there are still countless conversations that I'm involved in, whether I'm at the community pool or at the burger joint, or whether I'm at the kitchen table working on college applications for my child, or just dinner conversation about plans or discussions about relocating our IB program. Is relocating this program still on the table? And if it is, we would love the opportunity, you know, y'all are doing amazing things as we're hearing, visiting Pebblebrook, feet on the ground, actually looking at what's happening, we would love the opportunity to show you or give you more detail about the unique, the true unique value that the IB program has in the Smyrna community. Dan Pennick, Dr. Walker, they've been a catalyst for so many improvements in the, you know, in the time, I'm a 20-year resident of this area, and they've not been here that long, you know, Pebblebrook, other places, but the value that they've truly added to the entire Cobb community. They have done so many wonderful things for our community, and we would love the opportunity to talk more with you guys about the true value that it's bringing to the Smyrna area. School's out, but y'all are still here working so diligently. We're still here, working so diligently, but we really appreciate everything that you guys are doing, and we, again, we look forward to the improvements for the school and an update on what we hope will be continuing to have this magnet program right here in Smyrna, so thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. All right, next we have our action agenda. During the work session today, we had three items that were placed on the consent agenda, the recommendation for authorization of school properties.
Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Did we need items requiring action following executive session?
I'm sorry, yes, you are correct.
What? Yeah, I see there. I, so items requiring action following the executive session, yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. John Adams to bring those items requiring a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to bring you the Human Resources Personnel Report for today, June 20th, 2019. The administration recommends the approval of the identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the personnel action report as discussed in executive session. This evening, we do have six principal level and higher position recommendations, all of which are effective July 1st. Don Baker recommended to appointment Director Athletics Chief of Staff Division. Christopher Dowd recommended to appointment Executive Director Employment Human Resources Division. Dr. Dana Giles recommended for reassignment to Principal Pebblebrook High School. Travis Joshua recommended for reassignment to Principal Lindley Middle School. Ryan Snyder recommended for appointment to Director Transportation Department Operations Division, and Dr. Rebecca Volkering recommended appointment to Director Recruitment Retention and Workforce Analytics in the Human Resources Division. This concludes the Human Resources Personnel Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. Do I have a motion that we accept or report? Mr. Wheeler, do I have a second? Mr. Scamahorn, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All right, that's 7-0, none opposed. Okay, now, I'm caught up, right? Okay, the microphone is in the way. Okay, so today in the work session, we agreed on the consent agenda of three items, authorizing school properties disposal for the district, recommendation to work with the State Department of Education to prepare a five-year local facilities plan, and the recommendation for approval of rights of way with Georgia Department of Transportation Alto High School. So without objection, consent agenda goes forward. Now, item number four, discussion agenda, Mr. Superintendent. Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. John Adams to bring agenda items originally number four and five.
Yes, sir, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair, members of the board, agenda item number four, recommendation for approval toward a contract for Alatuna High School track resurfacing, as discussed in detail during the work session. In accordance with SPOLOST four, Alatuna is scheduled to receive a replacement track. Awarding the contract at this time will allow us to remain on schedule, complete the work this summer with substantial completion date of July 2019. Recommend the award, the resurfacing contract to Hellus Construction, and the amount you see there, $381,250, is budgeted in SPOLOST four, and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Do we have a motion? Mr. Scamahorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may make a motion that we approve agenda item number four.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Wheeler saw your hands, we have a motion, second, any further discussion? Okay, I don't see any, all right, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, any oppose? None, that's 7-0. So next, agenda item number five.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, agenda item number five, recommendation for approval to lease portable classrooms for school year 1920. Again, as discussed in detail during the work session, due to both student enrollment and ongoing construction, it is necessary to lease some temporary portable classrooms to meet our needs for the upcoming school year. Leasing them at this time will allow us to secure them in time for the beginning of the school year to accommodate the student needs. We're recommending that you award the RFP to Mobile Modular Management Corporation in the amount of $831,096, as budgeted in both SPOLOST four, five, and out of the district building fund, and that you approve the lease agreement with Mobile Modular Management Corporation of Loganville, and authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Mr. Scamahorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A move that we recommend that we approve, agenda item number five.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second? Ms. Davis, seconds? Any discussion? Okay, Dr. Howard?
Thanks again, John Adams, for information and just kind of giving some clarity. Just wanted to again, kind of talk again about those accessory costs, those things that kind of catch teachers and principals by surprise. Can you just kind of speak to what are our options there to make sure that our teachers are, they're okay? You know, we know about the construction sidewalks, having coverings, and you addressed having a kind of a do-it, do-it ourselves mentality, we can get the job done, but sometimes there are some IT issues, plumbing issues. If you can speak to that and kind of let us know what the game plan would be for our students that are in these portable classrooms.
Sure, and we mentioned earlier during the work session bathrooms, restrooms, and there are a minority of our portables that actually have restrooms. It's only the 48 at Osburn that have restrooms. To have a restroom in a portable is either cost prohibitive if you do it across the entire district, or if you have to put in plumbing, then it's even more expensive, so there is a bit of an inconvenience there, although some teachers, on balance, still prefer portables. As far as the startup cost, there are some one-time startup costs with the installation of portable above and beyond the portable itself. If we DIY it as much as we can through maintenance, maximize stakeholder resources, you're still looking, depending on the exact situation, at about 15,000 to 20,000 for initial setup, but that's one-time cost, which you then can amortize over the life of the portable, but it does increase a little bit the annual cost of that portable over time. But we do what we can to try to make them as nice as they can. You see, you see a lot of teachers will go the extra mile and decorate the outside of their portables and make them homey, shall we say. We will occasionally see external decorations, even every once in a while, pink flamingo or something like that, but we do what we can to try to make that as palatable for them, and there, as I said, there are some that prefer it, and you, I gave you some stats during the work session to give you some idea of the number of portables. You're looking at 140 portables district-wide at 37 locations, average is just over one per school, 117 of those are for classroom use, 23 are non-classroom use, where we let nonprofits like food pantries use them for free. Those are typically our double wides. There was some discussion of double wides, and we don't, we don't acquire double wides anymore. Of the 140 portables, 78 are leased, so this agenda item continues the lease of those. 61 of those are for construction, 17 or more for student enrollment, and Osburn has 48 that are funded in SPOLOST four, King Springs, 13 is funded in five, and a number of other schools have 17 from the countywide building fund. And it was also noted during the work session that the district, because of SPOLOST, has made tremendous progress in minimizing the number of portables over time, and at one point, we had approaching 800 portables in the district. So while they do allow us to be, to be nimble and economically address short-term needs, we still, we think we're in a very good place and that we do still try to keep them to a minimum.
Okay, can you speak a little bit more? You mentioned the single wide versus double wide. Can you, I mean, I can just imagine being in high school, and I know it's not the majority of the portable classrooms, but some are still single wide. Can you give me a sense of the classroom environment? Seems really narrow for the class size that we have at a high school level, and I wanted to know, are we accounting for potentially, you know, expanding those or switching them out to double wide? I just, I don't know if we've done a detailed look at that, so I would love the commentary on that.
We have very few single wides left that are for classroom use. The bulk of our single wides that we still have remaining, legacy units so to speak, are being used for non-classroom purposes, and then there's also some good news coming. Once we complete the Harmley-Leland Clay Elementary School and eventually King Springs, we will then have 20 owned portables that we'll be able to release soon, and those are more modern, that we'll be able to not lease other portables in the future, but there are very few single wides left in actual classroom use.
Is there a possibility to kind of be done with single wide classroom portable since we have so few and we kind of identified it's really not the ideal learning environment? Is that a possibility that for this coming year, we can incorporate that into our plan to just outfit all, just kind of make that a rule, or all the classrooms can be double wide instead of having that small number of single wides still in use?
Yes, sir, that'll be our goal, not just a possibility. If we can possibly do that, we'll try to get away from, from single wides. It's fine if you're going to be storing canned food for a food pantry.
Sure, sure. For classroom space.
For classroom use, yes, sir, that's our goal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Oh, sorry, Dr. Howard.
I am sorry about that. For that goal, does that change our bottom line, or do you think that could be accomplished with what we're approving today?
I think we can accomplish that hopefully by the end of the year, especially when we have some more come online.
Okay.
Without having to change anything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All right, I count sevens, none opposed, 7-0, and that brings us to board member comments. So let's start with Mr. Scamahorn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be short in time tonight. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our adult graduates from last Saturday. They graduated from the South Cobb Auditorium, and it's a partnership of Douglas County and Cobb, and it was a great ceremony, and we had graduates, I think, from about 17 to 77, so we're doing a great job there. I think they're a bit of unsung heroes that get, get those folks through and get their GEDs, so congrats to them, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, and for those that have not been to see the new South Cobb Theater, I think it's been up, what, about a year now? Wow, that's all I can say, it's a fantastic facility, and in fact, sometime after midnight, one night I may get some rollers and see if I can't move it up to my area, but anyway, congratulations to them. On a more somber note, since last we met in May, we have lost 12 officers, police officers in the line of duty, and I don't know where the end's going to be, but for the last probably five years, we've lost anywhere from nine to 13, 14 officers every month. I cannot imagine the heroes that have this job of being a police officer or sheriff or state patrol, excuse me, having that kind of attrition rate that you have to go to work and think about that, and I know many of them probably don't, but I would, I would think about it, and so 12 officers this month in the line of duty nationwide. In fact, one, she is a rookie policeman out in California, she was shot to death yesterday trying to help a lady escape from an abusive husband, that she was getting her things together, and this nitwit, if I may be so blunt, came in there and shot several people. So anyway, keep your thoughts and prayers for the officers and their families. Say thank you if you see someone in blue or someone with a badge. Heroes don't wear capes, they wear badges, so, and then total for the entire year is 56 line of duty deaths this year, so we're on par for 11 or 12 again this year. What a tragedy. I yield back, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Scamahorn. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have a few that I would like to do as well. First, I'm going to thank John Stafford. Yes, you always help out families, especially during graduation time, and I've never publicly said that, but really appreciate that, you going the extra mile, really appreciate that. Also, I have a T-shirt on from a teacher from Bryant Elementary. I promised her I was going to wear this shirt, Ms., remember her name, Angie Benton. You see, I told, look, I have your shirt on, I promised you I was going to wear it. Angie Benton Bryant Elementary. Also, as a teacher, one of the things that you learn in building relationships with scholars and children is this, if you are correcting them for some, some behavior that you want to see change, whether it's academically or their relationships with students, with their classmates, you want to be just as, you just, you want to be even more quick to praise them when you see the behavior starting to change, even if it's this much. You want to immediately say, hey, little Johnny, I noticed that you did X, Y, and Z. That's a part of building relationships and being an effective teacher. I say that to say this, this meeting's public comment was a stark contrast from last board meeting, public comment. We took it on the chin pretty good up here, last board meeting about things that, that people felt that we could do better, and I say that, I hope that, that what people came and said today during public comment in terms of things that they seen, that they've witnessed that have gotten better, or changes happening on respective campuses in terms of facilities, it is my hope that people see that as a school board and a school district that truly is being responsive and being receptive. Typically, you're not going to get as much applause as criticism, that's just a part of doing this job, but I do think it says a lot about our commitment to listening to the people that we serve and methodically working with our communities to improve things that need to be improved, so I hope that that, I hope that that, the progress we've made is not lost on any, any of our stakeholders. And finally, I want to say, I missed him for like three months, and I don't even think he's here. Darryl York is not here, is he? No. Well, if you remember probably about three months ago, we did a huge, we did a huge overhaul of our student code of conduct, and that was a heavy lift. You were a part of it, Dr. Daniel, and that was a heavy lift, and we brought in teachers and parents from elementary school, teachers and parents and administrators from middle school, teacher, parents, stakeholders, high school, and I want to publicly thank Mr. Darryl York, because he played an instrumental role in us revising how we're, our student code of conduct book. Apologize, Darryl, for taking me this long to acknowledge you, but I always get a lot of pride in acknowledging the unsung heroes, the people that you don't see all the time or that you might not know, but who really help our school district to run effectively. So those conclude my comments, Mr. Chair, and I yield.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Ms. Davis?
This is our first meeting since graduation, and I just wanted to say what a treat that was. I had a lot of fun, I was honored to be able to take part in those ceremonies, even got a little rap in from valedictorian at one of the schools. Kudos to Jennifer Lawson and her team, because the summer camps and the trainings that we're offering, teachers, I just think are pretty exceptional. Already got one of my kids signed up, and I had an opportunity to visit the early kindergarten program at Norton, Norton Park, and just thank you to the teachers and instructional apparel professionals that are working with some of our youngest students. It's pretty fun, and happy birthday to Dr. Kennedy. I think we're going to give a well message to- I think we're going to give a well message to Connie Jackson, but we need her around here, so hope to see her very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Dr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Few comments. First, happy anniversary, as of a couple of weeks ago, to Vanessa and I, 12 years in the game. So we hope to have about 50 or 60 more wedding anniversaries. So, so happy anniversary. Also, a shout out and a speedy recovery. I'm sure the rest of us can attest to how much we appreciate Connie Jackson for all that she's done, and she's at home recuperating. So we all wish you the best, and we're praying for you that you recover soon. And you're here at the board meeting to advocate on behalf of the teachers. Also want to give a shout out to our superintendent, Chris Ragsdale. I just never want to make light of how open he is to, he's not afraid for the board members to have access to the whole executive cabinet, just to pick their brains, have discussions. And, you know, I'm sitting at these meetings with some of your executive cabinet members, and I'm just really thankful, because as much as I love talking to you, I do, you know? It's great to be able to talk numbers, you know, with Brad, you know? And it's great to be able to talk academics with Jennifer. It's great to be able to talk different kind of money in buildings with John and talk leadership with Sherry. Just to be able to sit and have these meetings in a very detailed way, I want to make sure you know how much I appreciate that, and I want the public to know that as well. Graduation was incredible. This is my first graduation, being a part of the ceremony like that. So being able to participate Pebblebrook High School, Campbell High School, Osborne High School, it was, it was incredible. So I just wanted to thank all the leadership, thank all the students and family members who got our kids to cross that stage. Also, I can't stop, I can't end here without acknowledging yesterday was Juneteenth. And for those that don't know what Juneteenth is, it's a celebration for basically slaves, in particular in Texas, kind of finding out that slavery actually is over. June 19th, short, and kind of the name that goes with it is Juneteenth. We all know the Civil War didn't, you know, it was a pretty bloody terrible mess. The Emancipation Proclamation, that was September of 1862. It was supposed to be effective that slavery is over. That January, of January 1863, it took two and a half years for the war to officially be over. And then it took several months after that before people who were currently enslaved to actually find out that they've been free. And I think that's incredible. I say that because we got to remember our history. If we're going to remember the beautiful parts of our history, we got to take some of the ugly stuff too, because that's how we kind of know who we are and know where we come from. And I never want us to assume that progress just comes with time. That's not the case, because after slavery, we had Reconstruction, and there was progress. And then we went through an ugly period of Jim Crow, where for a lot of people in Georgia, it was the worst of times. And then citizens spoke up and fought back and ended up getting some partnerships and moving forward and getting through some challenging times together. I say that because I want us to always be hopeful, and that progress takes a lot of hard work. And we don't have to deal with Jim Crow right now, but we still deal with some of the legacy of Jim Crow and some of the sentiments and the undertone of Jim Crow. We deal with all kind of other things that we have to just acknowledge and not be afraid to talk about. I know some people, their eyes light up when I'm talking about this, and other people, they shut down completely. At the end of the day, we got to talk about it. I just appreciate this board, because we aren't afraid to have hard conversations. And I'm appreciating Cobb County School District for moving ahead and knowing that progress takes work, and I look forward to the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, I want to say, it was, graduation was a very enlightening experience. Also, every year, it's a fun experience. Got to participate at the Wheeler High School graduation and the Walton High School. Thanks to Ms. Davis giving me permission to participate. I thank you. And also for the Laester and Pope graduations, a lot of handshakes. But, but it's fun, and we, we get through it every year. Also, I want to praise our superintendent for being, creating, and his staff for creating one of the best places to work in Georgia, noted by Forbes magazine. So for him and for the staff, congratulations. Also, I want to say in seven days, I have an anniversary also.
Is it more than 12?
You'll find out. The princess and I have been married for a long time, and some of you have heard me make these statements. When I met my wife, she was a beautiful woman. When I married my wife, she was a beautiful woman. 55 years later, she's still a beautiful woman, so. And I hope to be able to say the same thing.
Everyone was nervous.
It did the six years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if I can top that. I'd just like to say congratulations to the Hillgrove Band Program. They've just returned home recently from the D-Day trip to Normandy, the 75th, I believe, anniversary. I mean, what a truly educational experience for those kids to have that, to be there and to see that. It's a once-in-a-lifetime thing. It's just simply amazing. And to make this be successful, I know that there was a tremendous amount of time and work put together by administration, band people, band boosters, band directors. I mean, there's, there's not just one person that made this happen. This is a truly group effort, and it's a big thank you to all of those people to provide that experience for the kids there to make it happen. Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, the, the summer has not left us without unfortunately having to offer condolences. We had a dodging middle school student pass away last week. And we just learned today that a rising sixth grade student that had just completed Riverside Elementary, fifth grade, had passed away. So certainly, our thoughts and prayers go out to both of those families. As in the loss of a, of a child, there can, there can be no greater loss. That being said, a couple of you already mentioned, we certainly have well wishes for Connie Jackson. She's obviously posted, you know, the battle with, with cancer that she is, is going through. So we, we wish her the best and keep her in our thoughts and prayers as well. Many of you have mentioned graduation. And yes, Mr. Banks, it is a lot of handshakes. But at the same time, it's the culmination of a successful school year for the, for the organization, the district as a whole, but a successful 13 years for over 8,000 graduates. So it's, again, a record-setting year. We had over 118 million in scholarships. And, and that keeps increasing each year. And, you know, we come to expect it now. So, you know, it's, it's just an example of how our students go above and beyond each year. And certainly could not be more proud of each and every one of those. An interesting note, Mr. Morgan, you, you recognized Mr. Stafford. As you know, we have taken on the, the process of live streaming our graduations. And this year, the, the data is just phenomenal. So we had 5,000 online connections to our live broadcast. All right, virtually every state in the country. But here's the amazing part. We had over 25 countries from virtually every continent watching graduation, which just goes to show the long-reaching impact that education has. Because relatives, friends, family, they want to be part of that once-in-a-lifetime opportunity of walking across that stage and graduating. And again, I can't thank all of our teachers enough, all of our team members for the entire organization, because regardless of what role you play, even the superstars that are our teachers, regardless if you're a kindergarten teacher or a 12th grade lit teacher, you have that same impact on every one of over 8,000 students walking across that stage each and every year. And while we're sitting here talking about graduation, next month, we will say, and the first day of school is two weeks away. So it is, it does seem to, to come at the blink of an eye, but it's certainly an awesome culmination to the year each year. It truly is. You know, it's, it's that time where, you know, it's summer break, and I sent out the end of the year email and certainly wish all of our team members a safe and relaxing and enjoyable summer. You know, you, you mentioned Forbes list, and it was the top employers by state. And we were the top school district, four school districts being the best employers in the state of Georgia. And over 180 school districts, that's saying something. That, that is certainly an accolade that, that I am very proud of. It's a team effort. And Dr. Howard, you mentioned, you know, the, the executive cabinet team and the cabinet team that we have. And I will be the first one to tell you that it's always been my philosophy, if I'm the smartest person in the room, I'm in the wrong room. It's all about the team. And, and making sure that, that we've got the, the right people in the right spots on the team is ultimately important to the success of, of this district. And, and I'm going to, going to end on something that you brought up, Mr. Wheeler, about the D-Day. You know, we're at a time in this country, I'm going to get on Soapbox for a second, where too many people have forgotten what happened. So I think it's very important for us to remember and be able to move forward as a community and as a country. So I appreciate you recognizing that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Well, I guess thanks to Dr. Howard and Mr. Banks, the first thing I need to say is my wife and I are celebrating our 37th anniversary this next Wednesday. And she's more beautiful than she ever was. And I met her at a Wheeler basketball game when I was home from college back in 1976. So anyway, so there's that part. It was fantastic to go through the graduation ceremonies with the folks at Sprayberry and Kell. And I just, it's great that we can use the Kennesaw Convocation Center, but it's an amazing thing to stand there on the stage and look up as far as you can see with standing room only and all these family members and relatives or friends are there to, to celebrate the major milestone of their kids. It's just a neat thing to be standing on that stage and be able to look and see all of it and the smiling faces of the kids. So that was a wonderful moment. And I think the only other thing I would mention is that Joe Jerkins, Austel, excuse, yeah, Austel Mayor is retiring. I visited, I think, Ms. Davis and Dr. Howard there yesterday and made well wishes to Mayor Jerkins as he retires, but happened to stand in line to sign the book with Ms. Carol or Carolyn Duncan, who was on the Cobb School Board many years ago. So she, I probably will give her a call and ask for advice. So anyway, thank you very much to everyone for a good workday. Mr. Banks, seconds?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I almost forgot about, and you were there, Cobb Horizon had their first full year graduation this year. So that's the first for Cobb County's latest high school.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. We had 89 graduates, and John Kelly, the principal, is doing a great job of, of growing that school. So now, if there's no objection, we are adjourned.